Hello, welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's public hearing for Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a piece of legislation up for discussion by Pittsburgh City Council. Bill Number 618, Petition from the residents of the city of Pittsburgh requesting a public hearing before Pittsburgh City Council relative to a plan by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to install roundabouts on Reynolds Street, AKA The Neighbor Way. If City Council is unable to conduct a public hearing due to COVID-19, we request the project be postponed and canceled until a live public hearing can be held. This petition is valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter. That concludes the reading of legislation up for discussion. Thank you and have a great day.
Good evening and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Cablecast Public Hearing for September 9th, 2020, relative to Bill 2020-0618. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill? There is no title of the bill, correct?
Yeah, we got one. Bill 618, Petition from the residents of the city requesting a public hearing before City Council relative to a plan by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to install roundabouts on Reynolds Street, also known as The Neighbor Way. The petition is valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter.
Thank you. For the record, we are joined today by Councilmember Deborah Gross and I'm sure other members will be joining us shortly. I do want to also mention that part of this project does cut through Councilman Reverend Burgess's district and he's represented today by Sean Carter. He would be here on a weekly meeting called Black Pittsburgh Matters. He's attending with Councilman LaBelle. But I've been assured that he will watch the YouTube video of this later and will register all the comments. Our first order of business this evening will be presentations by representatives from the city's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. Before we do that, I just want to note that although there is a bill attached to this hearing, the bill is relative to a call, a petition for a public hearing, which under city code, if there are 25 residents who are able to, at least 25 residents who are able to verify that they live in the city and would like to call for a public hearing on any matter, we must hold a public hearing and that's why we're doing it on this. I do want to clarify for those who are watching and those who are attending that there is no actual council vote. This will not result in a vote tonight or ever. This is, there's no actual legislation that needs to be voted on relative to The Neighbor Way. But the bill, there's a bill number because it's attached to their request for public hearing. So just wanted to clarify that because I know that can be confusing and that's a little bit of the inside baseball here. I also wanted to note that it's typical for a public hearing at the very beginning to, before public speakers are allowed to speak for a relevant department to be able to say a few words and make a query and some partner organizations will be giving a brief presentation on The Neighbor Way and related traffic calming measures throughout the city. So I'd like to introduce Director of Mobility and Infrastructure, Domi, Karina Ricks.
Thank you, councilmembers and members of the public. We appreciate the opportunity to participate in this hearing and provide a little bit of background on the project as orientation. Let me get this going. So Reynolds Neighbor Way is an exciting project. We're looking forward to implementing this project. As many that we do across the city really fits into the overarching goals that the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure has embraced and works to implement for the city of Pittsburgh. First and foremost, that no one dies traveling on our city streets. Safety is and will always be our number one priority. We also seek to avoid any serious injuries for those that are traveling around our city. Well, two is that all households can access fresh fruits and vegetables within 20 minutes' travel of home and that this doesn't require a private automobile to achieve this basic human right. Well, three is that walking and bicycling are the most joyful mode of travel, especially for short distance trips. We define these trips as trips less than two miles in distance, of which about 40% of those trips are currently driven by motor vehicle in the city of Pittsburgh. So this could make a tremendous difference, enhancing the ability to walk and bike for short distance trips. Fourth goal is that no household needs to spend more than 45% of household income for basic housing and basic transportation to meet those critical tasks of life. And finally, that our streets and public rights of way reflect the values of our community and that we are a community that values inclusion, equity, neighborliness, and the people of our city and the pride that we have. We've recently completed what we call the Bike Plus Master Plan. This was a five-year-long project in development. It followed on the heels of our last 10-year plan that actually expired 10 years ago. In the course of developing this plan, we engaged over 750 unique persons and they provided in turn over 1,500 discreet comments on the map that's up on the screen now. This is in response to the need to really accommodate these other modes of alternative travel. We know from the survey and research that was done in association with this plan that over one-third of Pittsburghers do bicycle, at least occasionally, and that many more expressed that they would use this mode of transportation for recreation or for purposeful destinations if they felt safer doing this and they felt better accommodated. This plan does propose 123 miles of on-street facilities. And just to put that in context, we do have over 1,200 miles of city streets overall across the city. So about one in 10 might be purposely designed to accommodate persons traveling on bicycles. And we do talk about Bike Plus as this reflects emerging mobility demands as we see new lighter mobility devices such as skateboards and scooters and e-scooters and other types of similar devices. This is a plan for all ages and all abilities. We know, and there's been extensive research done across the country, that the majority of people really would classify themselves as being interested but concerned about using bicycle as a mode of travel in an urban environment. So research says there's somewhere between 51% to 56% of people that would categorize themselves this way. Far fewer percentages would call themselves somewhat confident or highly confident using a bicycle as a mode of travel on an urban street. These interested but concerned users are often not comfortable traveling in conventional bike lanes with adjacent traffic. They are shy of that adjacent traffic and feel generally threatened by it regardless of speeds. They prefer to be on protected or separated facilities or quieter residential streets. These are users that will ride on sidewalks and do ride on sidewalks if no comfortable facility is provided. I'll remind people that riding on sidewalks is permissible in the city of Pittsburgh in residential areas. It is not permissible in commercial areas of the city. Nonetheless, we do prioritize sidewalks for pedestrians and would like to provide that accommodation for them to the extent possible. This does leave 28% to 40% of people that we would kind of categorize as the no-way, no-how users. They are not going to get on a bicycle, it's not for them. But bicycle facilities are still for these people that do not bicycle. Providing those bicycle facilities increases predictability on our city streets. It lowers crash rates and protects and preserves sidewalks for pedestrians. There is a continuum of different types of bicycle facilities that serve these different kinds of abilities. Those on the right side of the screen are those that are more inviting to these all-ages and all-abilities users. So the more vulnerable users, the more cautious users. So these would fall into the category of protected bicycle lanes where we do have the space to accommodate that. Multi-use pathways where we can do that through some of our wonderful parks and waterfronts and neighborways that are these lower residential streets that have lower volumes of traffic and generally lower travel speeds. These are lower-stress facilities. Those on the left generally are considered to be higher-stress facilities, which those more vulnerable, interested but concerned users would tend to shy away from and that would discourage use of these more sustainable, affordable modes of travel. So getting to the Reynolds Neighbor Way, one of the questions is, why did the Bike Plus Plan identify Reynolds as being a corridor for this? Again, that's in part from the results of the 750 participants that gave their input into the five-year development of this plan, but really identified this as being that critical east-west connection in this larger network that links together a number of existing facilities that we have that provides great access to green spaces, schools, employment, commercial destinations and others. And this was the one route that provided that continuous connection and was of a naturally lower-stress character. So why did we choose a neighborway instead of one of the alternative designs for low-stress bicycle accommodation? And that's because this was appropriate to the context. Reynolds Street is a residential street by and large. There are some commercial areas along it. It is a place where we wanted to manage traffic volumes, manage vehicle speeds, but really didn't want to impact parking, which might result from that reallocation of street space for designated bike facilities. The Neighbor Way maintains general street operation, so it's not a radical departure from how the street is currently used today. And it is one of those facilities that's appropriate for all ages and all abilities. We did identify that there was a need for countermeasures. Reynolds Street by itself, as it exists today, really did not pass that threshold of being a low-stress route for those more vulnerable users because although it has a posted speed of 25 miles per hour, data collection on the corridor indicated that more than 50% of the motorists on this residential low-speed street exceeded that posted speed limit. The 85th percentile speed, which is an important measure in traffic engineering and transportation planning, was measured at 32 miles an hour, so significantly above the posted speed of 25 miles an hour. The average daily traffic was not inconsequential. Most of the corridor was at that lower range of about 3,000 vehicles per day, but as we sort of saw the corridor progress closer to Beechwood Boulevard, then we'd see higher volumes of traffic, up to 80,000 vehicles a day. While it's not a high-crash corridor, we did see incidents of crashes that couldn't be dismissed on the corridor, so 30 crashes in the last 15 years. Important to note is that half of those crashes resulted in injury, which again, for a low-speed residential street, is more than we might expect to see. And about a third of those crashes involved a pedestrian or a bicyclist and that was roughly in equal proportions of those crashes involving a pedestrian or those crashes involving a bicyclist. So we came in light of all of this, the plan, the desire to have these improvements, and we brought forward an initial concept for the Reynolds Neighbor Way. And this concept involved four new landscaped mini-circles. One at Gettysburg, another at Mertland, another at South Lang, and another at South Linden Avenue. And these mini-circles would operate in yield operations. And we'll talk a little bit more about what mini-circles are in a second. A series of public engagements were held, starting in February 25th, 2020, when we met in person back in the day to finalize the draft master plan, some additional meetings with the Point Breeze organization, public meetings, stakeholder meetings, and now bringing us today to the City Council hearing. So a number of different engagements that really led us to make a number of different changes to that proposed initial concept. So instead of having four landscaped mini-circles, we reduced that just to three, converting the proposed mini-circle at Gettysburg to bumpouts instead of a mini-circle at that location. One of the three remaining mini-circles was designed to have a hardscaped center to it rather than the landscaped and this would facilitate operations of the neighborhood crossing guards that were there in response to feedback that we got from people with disabilities. We've made the determination to maintain stop control operations at these intersections rather than the yield control that was initially proposed. And we've upgraded all of the pedestrian crossings to be high-visibility, non-slip crossings at all pedestrian locations. So just showing some general designs of what these might look like at the different intersections, Gettysburg, Linden, Mertland, and Lang. You can see Gettysburg, then the image at the lower left has the bumpouts with the planters. Linden and Mertland would both benefit from landscaped mini-circles, which in other communities are really a source of pride and beauty for those communities. And then at South Lang, this would be a hardscaped mini-circle, still having those benefits of traffic calming and safety, but allowing better operations for the school crossing guards. A little bit of distinction, even the title of the bill for this public hearing is a little bit misleading. These are mini-circles, these are not traffic roundabouts. And there are some really important distinctions between the two so that we're using the right terminology. Mini-circles are generally very compact. They're sort of eight to 20 feet in diameter, depending on the existing geometry of the intersection. They do fit within the existing geometry of the intersection without changing the curb lines. They generally feature a mountable traffic island in the middle. They're used on minor streets and generally they serve as an alternative to two- or four-way stop-controlled intersections. Most of the traffic travels around the circle. However, emergency and large vehicles can make left turns in front of the circle or actually mount right over the top of the circle. Again, it has mountable curbs on it. The pedestrian line of travel is maintained as they exist today. And as we said, they may be stop or yield controlled, they may be landscaped or hardscaped. Traffic roundabouts, in contrast, are generally larger. So these are typically in excess of about 30 feet in diameter. They're typically used on higher-order streets, arterial or collector streets. They generally replace where you have a signalized intersection because they are able to process more traffic than the signalized intersection, about 30% more. Crosswalks are generally pulled back and so the pedestrian line of travel is diverted. They have splitter islands, they're typically yield-controlled operations and generally because they're larger, they are often landscaped there. So just the distinction, we are talking about mini-traffic circles in this instance, not traffic roundabouts. And so as you see research out there, most of the research that is there involves roundabouts, not the mini-circles. We did do a number of tests on the pilot intersections that we've established on Euclid Street, which is a similar neighborway, and have conducted a significant amount of research and looked at best practices across the country. You can see here the delay that often is impacting emergency vehicle services of different countermeasures for traffic calming. So mini-circles are on the lower end of that, not introducing much delay at all and in some respects facilitating emergency vehicle access because it's able to process traffic a little bit better. Curb extensions as well are able to organize the space better and facilitate that emergency vehicle access. You can see on the other side, speed humps and stop signs tend to have more of an impact on that access. And then, you know, also really important beyond the emergency vehicle impacts or non-impacts, the benefits that are yielding to them, is the overall goal that we have here of safety. Again, that's our number one goal. And so some important statistics to keep in mind is that our target speed for this is to really keep that down to about 20 miles per hour. The legal speed limit is 25 miles per hour. But again, where police can enforce speeds is 10 miles over the posted speed limit. So you can see the odds of death for a pedestrian at those lower rates of speed, 20 miles per hour, is just 18%, so very comparatively low odds of fatality on a corridor like that compared to 64% where two-thirds of pedestrian crashes would result in death at what we would consider, many would consider, a modest rate of speed of just 35 miles per hour. Mini-circles have a demonstrated effect of reducing traffic speeds to four to six miles per hour. So if we have a 25 mile per hour corridor, we would get down into that 20 mile per hour goal when they're used in succession along a corridor. So this really led us to the countermeasure of using mini-circles and curb extensions on Reynolds Way as the means of providing for all abilities, all ages and abilities bicycle travel here. We have heard a lot of feedback from persons with disabilities, especially with regard to the pilot mini-circles that are out on Euclid, but obviously that carries important context for these mini-circles on Reynolds as well. And so in response to those very legitimate concerns and advice and feedback that we received from many aspects of the community, we will retain stop controls at all stop-controlled locations. So again, initially they were proposed as yield. We will retain that stop controls. We will add high-visibility, non-slip markings at all the pedestrian crossing locations. We will maintain only low-level landscape in those landscaped medias, so less than 36 inches, so that the driver has a clear line of sight across all crosswalks there. The use of the stop will slow and stop both vehicles and bicycles at these intersections. And so again, facilitating movement of pedestrians. And we've done this in consultation with, by inviting a local focus group that represented persons with disabilities. We have consulted with the City-County Task Force on Disabilities subsequent to the pilot installation. And we have engaged a National ADA Design Advisor for all of these neighborway projects now. And we'll continue to monitor, assess, report, and improve on these and all traffic interventions that we do of all natures across the city. So appreciate the time to give that sort of context. More information is on that website. And looking forward to seeing what the comments are and answering any further questions that there might be.
Thank you, Director Ricks. We will now move to testimony from registered speakers. I ask that you please give your name and neighborhood for the public record. Each speaker will have three minutes to address counsel and I will announce who is up on deck. Our first speaker is Grant Bakarak, followed by Lawrence Gerson.
Hello? Can I hear you?
We can hear you.
Okay. So I just wanted to say that that was more information than we, that's a lot of the information we were looking for from Katrina Ricks. We were very concerned about safety and the... She gave a lot more information that we haven't had over the last six months. And a lot of the neighborhood dissent was due to the fact that there was no information really being given to us and the information that was given to us had been changing so often because it was, I'm not gonna lie, this was very mismanaged. We were originally concerned about speed humps on Reynolds and then it became roundabouts and the roundabouts were going to be yield signs and nobody understood why you were removing stop signs to add yield signs onto Reynolds Street. Now that you've clarified a lot, Katrina, my original dissent isn't completely there anymore. I'm not gonna lie. I don't love the plan. I don't think it's gonna look very good in a few months, but I don't have the original dissent because you're leaving the stop signs. I will, however, contend that the stop signs have not stopped bikers from slowing down or stopping. And that has become a concern for a lot of people. Just in the last two weeks, I've almost been hit by bikers twice in crosswalks in Point Breeze. And if you go down, if you see Reynolds to Hastings, the bikers never stop going down that hill, ever. And it's a very big concern, especially for people coming out of the restaurants there. The fact that we were just supposed to blindly support this has caused a lot of problems in the neighborhood. I've been threatened, I've been called a pervert because I was against this project from the beginning because I assumed that it was gonna cause major traffic problems on Reynolds that were then going to be moved up to Edgerton and Willard where kids are playing on the streets. So I mean, this is still a neighborhood where kids are on the street all the time. A lot of those concerns are gone now that you're leaving in the stop signs. I don't love that, I do some studies that I did look up that did include mini-circles, that included, I think it's the cone of vision that they talk about in these and I know that that's roundabouts, but it does include mini-circles, especially the Center for Transportation and Engineering from Canada. And they do suggest that larger vehicles turning in the front of circles.
Thank you. It's a reminder, everyone has three minutes. Next, we have Lawrence Gerson, followed by William Parker.
Hi, my name is Larry Gerson. I am a 70-year resident of the city of Pittsburgh and I currently live in Point Breeze. I've owned a business on Reynolds Street for 40 years. I'm the past president and current board member of the Point Breeze organization and I'm the old guy that rides the bike on Reynolds Street. These are my personal feelings and not anything official from the Point Breeze organization. So what I wanted to talk a little bit about is the good, the bad, and the ugly. So the good is that you're leaving the stop signs and that is not what they told us at the last meeting and that was the biggest bone of contention. Everybody, everybody wants safe streets and safe driving, alright? We're delighted that Domi changed the plans for Gettysburg where they were gonna put in a circle. There's still a circle drawn in the street, but they changed that to enhance street design and that's just wonderful. I gotta thank Ricardo for getting together the Point Breeze organization, the merchants on Reynolds. But that would have never happened if I didn't call Ricardo and insist on it. Elise Gonauer was just absolutely wonderful. She met with me privately to discuss the scope of the street design because many of us merchants were concerned about the loss of parking, which the circle definitely would have done. Beth Haslett was just unbelievably accommodating to get us information about what this project all was because at the first meeting, it was very, really vague. And she sent us information, but it took a month. It took a month to find out what happens at Hastings Streets, what enhanced street design was at Hastings Street. So the other thing that's wonderful is the crosswalk at Beechwood and Mellon Park, which is a big, big danger area. And that has now, not barriers, but markers in the street that slows traffic and it really makes it easier for us. And I also have to thank all the council people for attending today, but especially Councilwoman Strausberger and her staff because they're always willing to meet with us. So if I can just take a minute to talk about the bad. The communications on this whole project were absolutely terrible, absolutely terrible. The original meeting was called with 48 hours' notice. You couldn't get on to the reservation to get on to the meeting and if you did make the reservation, you couldn't figure out how to actually get on to it because of the complexity of the computer program that they used. And then if you wanted to make a contact to them, they had the wrong email listed if you wanted to make a contact. The meeting was really vague and it took a month for us to get more information. And just today, we're finding out that you're leaving the stop signs, which was not what they said at the very last meeting, that they said was the last meeting before this thing was gonna be built. So, you know, it's frustrating. The whole thing has been an exercise in frustration. And what it did on Nextdoor created a lot of conflict between the neighbors and the businesses and the neighbors between each other and the businesses. We were ready to kill each other because some people wanted circles and some people didn't want circles. And some people wanted stop signs added and some people wanted stop signs.
Thank you. Next, we have William Parker, followed by Hikawana Malmakina.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, how are you doing today? My name is William Parker and I'm the CEO of Vinspin. I just wanted to continue a comment from earlier today and I just wanted to, this message is basically for Corey Connor. I just wanted to know which, who has he spoken with in the black tech community to get their input regarding the facial recognition bill that he proposes? I think it's important that we get... I think it's important that we get people from our community involved with these decisions. And I do feel that there is a need for certain surveillance in our communities that are most hit by high violent crime offenses. So I don't think a complete removal is the answer. I just think that we need to focus on which software that we should choose moving forward. And I think that we should be a part of creating that software. People in the tech industry here, especially African Americans. So I just wanted to get this in before next Tuesday's vote on that, on that issue, on that bill. I just want you all to ask yourself, who have you all spoke with in the black tech community to get their input on the surveillance issue? Because if you haven't spoke with anyone, I can't see how you all could just speak on our behalf and just basically tell us what we need or what we don't need. So again, I'll follow up and I'll join you guys next Tuesday or next Wednesday as that bill was brought back up. But before then, I hope someone, someone is able to connect with someone in the black tech industry here in Pittsburgh and get their input on the pros and cons of that facial recognition bill that he proposes. That's all.
Thank you. Next, we have Ikona Malmakena, followed by Charles Pegger. Is Ikona Malmakena here? Okay, next is Charles Pegger, followed by Scott Ricker.
My name is Chuck Pegger and I'm a resident of Point Breeze. I've been a resident for the last 21 years. I don't want to repeat what other speakers said, but I will add to it. The notification process has been horrible. By the time people in our neighborhood and speaking to our neighborhoods learned anything, this project was well underway. In fact, I feel like this speaking now is, it's already a done deal. The only thing we received from the city was a card in the mail that the residents received saying on the end, at the end of August, beginning of September, the, the construction would begin. I assume that's been postponed. But my point is the communication is horrible. Also, I'm very concerned about this project and others. The influence of Bike Pittsburgh has on, they don't speak for the city of Pittsburgh, the residents of the city of Pittsburgh. Karina Ricks knows almost every one of those people by name. As the gentleman started this meeting, she knew every one of them. Let's try to get involved with the residents, not just special interest groups that have a stated agenda of promoting bikes. If you, and if the concern of the city really is safety, which I agree with, there's two accidents a year on Reynolds Street. But you know what? What's gonna happen is right now, we see more and more bikes, skateboarders, joggers, walking. Okay, I'll accept the bikes, but the way, why are people walking in the middle of the street? Why is that allowed to happen? What happened to enforcement? I agree that people speed along there and that people run through stop signs, but it's not just vehicles. It's bikes too. There's no enforcement being done. And finally, in conclusion, I would say, just in full disclosure, I'm not a speed racer. I've had two fender benders in 50 years of driving and one speeding ticket. So I'm not speeding around the city streets and I'm a lifelong Pittsburgher. But it is unacceptable, the lack of communication and to look only at the motorists and blame them for these accidents. We all bear responsibility for safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Scott Ricker, followed by Marty Seltman. And I have Marty and Janet Seltman.
Well, I'm so glad I get to speak next. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. My name is Scott Ricker. I live in East Liberty and ride Reynolds Street multiple times a week to visit Frick Park and my family who lives in Point Breeze. I'm also the executive director of Bike Pittsburgh, one of the partners on the initiative to implement the city's recently published Bike Plus Plan and aims to create a citywide safe bicycle network. Bike Pittsburgh is an 18-year-old bike and pedestrian advocacy organization with roughly 3,500 members, more than 150 of whom live in Point Breeze. We are clearly in favor of neighborways. This new street type that slows down car traffic in order to make it safer for people of all ages and abilities, whether they walk, ride a bike, roll in a wheelchair, or drive. There are lots of tools engineers use to develop a neighborway. Speed humps, raised crosswalks, lower advisory speed limits, curb bump outs, chicanes, traffic diverters, and traffic circles. In the case of Reynolds Street, the city traffic engineers have used their judgment to determine that traffic circles are the appropriate tool that would help make the streets safer and less stressful for bicyclists, pedestrians, and people who live in the neighborhood, especially along Reynolds. I won't get into the proven safety outcomes of traffic circles, which are well documented and in use nationwide, including in Seattle, where more than 1,200 have been installed. What I will delve into is why neighborways and other street enhancements are desperately needed to enhance connectivity to everything the city has to offer. Number one, of course, is safety. Cars and trucks are getting bigger and people are driving them faster. This is a deadly combination of larger, heavier vehicles moving at faster speeds through our neighborhoods. Traffic calming tools such as circles reduce speeds and crashes. Equity. Approximately 25% of Pittsburgh households do not have access to a car and all children under 16 can't drive. Transportation is one of the top two largest household expenses in Pittsburgh and we should be providing more ways for people to get around safely and affordably. The environment. Transportation emissions comprise about a third of our climate change emissions and a significant source of health harming pollution. With one of the worst rankings on air quality in the nation and a climate emergency, we only have 10 years to get ahead of. We need all of the above approach in order to address the issues, including getting many more people riding bikes. Health. People of all ages are less active than we used to be years ago. A big reason for this is the built environment. Our streets do not feel safe enough for the majority of people to try to get around or exercise by foot and by bike. This particular neighborway will act as part of a network that serves to connect multiple neighborhoods to two major parks in the East End. We at Bike Pittsburgh have seen firsthand Domi's commitment and professionalism in addressing legitimate concerns about street designs and operations. They are committed to their goals and making sure good ideas are incorporated into projects before construct-
Thank you. Next, we have Marty or possibly Janet Seltman, followed by Ned Huber.
Hi. My name is Marty Seltman and I live on the current traffic circle at Reynolds and Homewood and have been here for over 30 years. And I'm very much in support of the city's proposed neighborway on Reynolds. I regularly bike on this street to get to Squirrel Hill, Oakland, Shady Side, East Liberty, and downtown. While it is certainly not the most dangerous street that I bike on, I have seen cars driving too fast and going through stop signs. And as you said, there's been a number of accidents on our street over the past several years. I applaud this well thought out approach to traffic calming and encouraging more folks to bike and walk with confidence in our neighborhood and in our city. The combination of mini circles and prominent signage will make it clear to everyone, bikers and drivers in particular, that we in Point Breeze value slowing down and sharing the road. I've already volunteered to help with plantings at the traffic circles. And I look forward to this effort to improve our neighborhood as we become part of a citywide safe biking network. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ned Huber, followed by Lea Nicolich Henkin.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Great, thanks. You have to push the magic button to get on. So I've been commuting by bicycle from Point Breeze into Oakland and Squirrel Hill and East Liberty since 1979. So Larry may be older than me, but I've been doing it for a while. And Reynolds is really one of the easiest streets to ride on. I mean, compared to Wilkins or some of the others where you've now put bike lanes in, it's a breeze. I really appreciate, I think Domi and Move Forward are working hard to do what they believe is the right thing. I'm not quite sure their agenda always lines up with the neighborhood, but I, like the others, really appreciate you leaving the stop signs in. Because to me, a traffic circle with a yield is just an excuse for a finger pointing accident. Whereas stop signs, everybody knows their job is to stop and look. So I, that's a big improvement and that really is brand new. So I appreciate that. One of the interesting things I was, I did an experiment. I drove through the traffic circle at North Euclid and Carroll Hill. And I did it three times. And the only thing that kept my speed down was I only had one block from a stop sign to go through the circle fast. And I got my Dodge Caravan up to 25 without any trouble going through the circle. So those circles, at least that circle, didn't slow me down really at all. And the other concern I have is you say, well, you want people to go 20, but the speed limit's 25. Well, please, I know in California where my kids live, they put speed humps up that go 15, but the street is marked for 25. And that seems really annoying that you're, you know, wait, just allow us to go the speed limit, if that's the speed limit, please. Finally, the other thing that I take a little bit of issue with is the map of accidents. When you look at the accidents at the intersections that you're talking about, you're only addressing one out of however many accidents there were. And there actually were four of those accidents at already existing traffic circle. So I don't think it's actually valid to say the traffic circles are an improvement because they're right in our neighborhood, the data argues against it. So I appreciate you leaving stop signs in. That's a great thing. I don't think you need traffic circles. I think that the stop signs is efficient. I especially would ask you to reconsider the one coming up Reynolds from Hastings at Linden because you're coming up that hill. And giving the driver anything more confusing, you know, a traffic circle and trying to figure out how to go, coming up that hill, think about in the winter where you're trying to decide, can I stop and not slide backwards and some things like that? So please reconsider, maybe save us a circle and don't put it there. The proposal I'd really like to suggest is just put one circle in at, say, Reynolds and South Mertland and put a camera there and at Reynolds and Lang. And just watch it for a whole year. In the winter, watch the snowplow, watch the garbage trucks and see what really happens. And if it's not a problem, then you can add some more traffic circles. But I think you're gonna find that in this street and in the weather of Pittsburgh and stuff, Seattle and California, you know, it doesn't snow there. We don't have the same challenges. So, so I appreciate all the changes you've made and that makes good sense. And I could live with what you're doing now, but I still don't think it's best. I would do a one-year full camera experiment if I had my way or working or clean for the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lea Nicolich Henkin, followed by Andrew Bloom Garden.
Hi, my name is Lea Nicolich Henkin and I'm a resident of Shady Side. I'm here today representing Shady Side Complete Streets, a community group which advocates for street safety and accessibility for pedestrians and bicyclists in our neighborhood and larger community. When we learned about this meeting, our group put together a petition to support the project, which we've sent to councilperson Strausberger. In only four days, we gathered 59 signatures, primarily from residents of District Eight and also from surrounding neighborhoods. Many of these people included personal anecdotes, talking about how they use Reynolds for commuting, for recreation, and to take their kids out biking, but often feel safe because of aggressive driving. For me personally, I'm really excited to have neighborways showing up in Pittsburgh. I've already biked on the ones in Highland Park and the South Side. They can transform something that's a necessary and often stressful experience to something that's a pleasure and a destination. I often ride on Reynolds to get around the neighborhood and as a confident or maybe overconfident city cyclist, I find it to be a decent street to bike on. However, when I think about trying to bring my friends out biking with me, I generally just don't bother because I know that they would find it to be a scary experience. When the new neighborway is built on Reynolds, I hope I'll be able to bring my friends there to enjoy it with me. I imagine outings where we go for a walk in Frick Park and on the way back, stop along Reynolds for lunch or a coffee. I'm looking forward to the day when I can bike across the whole city without feeling threatened or defensive and Reynolds Street will be an important part of that path. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrew Bloom Garden, followed by Jason McCullough.
Hello, I'm Andrew Bloom Garden, a homeowner and a six-year resident of Shady Side. For the entire time I have lived in Pittsburgh, I haven't owned a car, getting around on my two feet, my bike, and transit. Reynolds has been and continues to be a frequent street for me, walking and biking both. I was a patient of Dr. Offerman's in the business district until he retired. I went to make your mark and now go to Common Place. I go to the Brick Museum, Frick Park, to East End Food Co-op. I go to Regent Square and I go visit friends in the area. And all of those are via Reynolds. In theory, and much of the time, it's a low traffic, low speed neighborhood street. But like many streets here, the design allows Pittsburgh drivers to violate that routinely. It just takes one person speeding at 40, 50 miles an hour aggressively passing me on my bike, busting through a stop sign, nearly hitting a car coming the other way to make a safe street become like a death trap. It's so easy for one person to make the street unsafe for many more. This is routine on Reynolds and on Ellsworth both. By contrast, while biking the other day on the new North Euclid neighborway in East Liberty Highland Park, a driver was annoyed that I was in their way on the street. Rather than being able to aggressively pass me, their circles made it a safe interaction. I was able to get where I was going and they were as well, albeit with a delay of a few seconds. The techniques used on North Euclid and proposed for Reynolds are in use around the country and the world. They improve safety, they make the streets more attractive, and they encourage more active use of the street. Stepping back from Reynolds alone, I believe that it's vital that the city continue to invest in facilities like this. Six years ago, I lived in Portland where the Neighborhood Greenway Network made it safe and easy to bike around much of the city. Pittsburgh's downtown bike network is actually getting to be better than Portland's was then. But the missing piece still is the connected network of lanes, paths, and neighborways that allow folks to get there and around the rest of the city. I'm thankful that Domi and its partners are planning as much as they are and I hope that they are able to build out this and the full Bike Plus network. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jason McCullough, followed by Becky Forgrave.
Hello? Hello, this is Jason McCullough. So I live on South Merton Street off of Reynolds, a block and a half away, three doors down from the intersection of Willard Street. So I am strongly in support of the neighborway project overall. I do agree with many of the people who I had thought were against it originally, that a lot of communication issues have led to a lot of angst amongst our community and amongst each other that could have been resolved. But I realize it's a process. Stop signs were not part of it and now they are. The process did improve things. I would say so, I very much get the neighborway project, the Connect Pittsburgh project. I'm completely for that. I bike every single neighborhood of Pittsburgh. But I would also look at safety elsewhere. A lot of people use Willard Street and I would, from my own personal observation, say Willard Street is much more, has much more speeding violations and certainly stop sign violations than does Reynolds. And a lot of cyclists use that as you come straight off Wilkins and cut through to come down Mertland Lloyd or Lyng to get to Frick or other parts of Point Breeze. So I would look at extending the safety throughout it either through speed humps or even a circle at Mertland Willard. I also want to say, also, general safety outside of this project in Pittsburgh seems to be going backwards. And I'm not talking about city planning, I'm talking about individual behavior. And I've just noticed this about July, these last couple of months, I've noticed much more aggressive driving behaviors. And a new, and also a new thing I've seen this year is many large trucks and Jeeps are getting these tires that stick out from their cars. And I believe that's a change in Pennsylvania inspection law. And I was wondering if Pittsburgh can maybe put ordinances around that because if you're side swiped by a car, you might get knocked down. Where if you got hit by the spinning wheel instead, that sticks out from the fender, you could be much more serious. But overall, I do support this project. My only argument all along is it might not go far enough, including stop signs. I'd be including speed humps. And then just one more comment to address, I think something came up earlier and someone can correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe the reason why we keep our speed limits at 25 miles per hour is there's a state law that says you're not allowed to put a speed limit lower than that. And we see communities around here, Forest Hills, there's a lot of 15 mile an hour streets, but none of the population has fought that in that if Pittsburgh put a 15 mile per hour sign up and someone fought it, it would lose in court. So why spend the money? But I believe that's why the 25 mile per hour speed limit, even though we're trying to get it down to 20 and I hope eventually 15. But just put that statement in there.
Thank you. Next is Becky Forgrave, followed by Eric Oost.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, my name's Becky Forgrave. And while I just moved to Friendship last month, I lived in Point Breeze along Penn Avenue for three years, which I know is not a long time for most residents here, but it was a while in one place for me. First at Homewood Avenue and then Penfield Court. My daily commute to Oakland always started using Reynolds Avenue, as well as other trips to Squirrel Hill and Shadyside. The connections that Reynolds has to Dallas Avenue, Beechwood Boulevard, and Walnut Street via Mellon Park make Reynolds Avenue a key connector in the larger bike network, connecting people who live in Point Breeze to the rest of the city, and the rest of the city to Frick Park, East End Food Co-op, and other local businesses. My bicycle is my main method of transportation anywhere within the city. Navigating by bike requires a deep knowledge of the city than getting around by car. Because you have to know which streets are safer, which intersections can be dangerous at certain times of the day. And when I first moved here, I taped the bike map to my wall to, I could memorize which routes were safe in all parts of the city. And this map's a great resource, but it's less useful while actually riding. And so I really appreciated the other neighborways I've seen in other parts of the city for their thorough signage, making it easy to navigate safely and find parallel alternative routes to busy arterials. And so this is why I really support the Reynolds Neighborhood Project. I think the many traffic circles will be helpful for slowing cars. And in my three years of biking, I haven't personally had any close calls with Reynolds, though I have witnessed some speeding. But again, the main reason I'm so excited is about the signage, the way finding pavement markings and the signage. So great to help new people get around an area. And I get so worried when I see bicyclists on Penn trying to get by with cars swerving around them. I've seen many car crashes on Penn. And I'm just looking forward to this route being part of the larger network to help people know that there is a safer alternative just a few blocks away from Penn. I think this neighborway project can really amplify the already great things about Reynolds Avenue and make sure people know about it. I appreciate Domi for having several meetings with residents as this project was developed and listening and incorporating feedback in this iterative process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Eric Oost, followed by Jay Walker.
Hi, my name is Eric Oost. I want to thank you, thank City Council for the opportunity to speak this evening. My wife and I have lived on Reynolds Street in Point Breeze since 2004. We have two kids. We walk our dogs on Reynolds, we ride our bikes on Reynolds, and we drive on Reynolds. None of these three are safe at this time. Last May, on a casual evening bike ride, both my wife and I were struck by a reckless driver in Point Breeze. Both of us were taken to the emergency room and still have lingering effects of the accident. We were very lucky that our injuries were not much worse. The proposed improvements is an excellent design that will improve the flow for vehicles while making Reynolds a much safer, much safer for pedestrians and cyclists at the same time. This proposal makes drivers move with more caution and better awareness, creating a safer environment for everyone. I'm a principal at Urban Design Associates, an international urban design firm based right here in Pittsburgh. We specialize in revitalization of urban neighborhoods, and we have seen that cities that incorporate such improvements see an increase in pedestrian safety, an increase in cycling use, and at the same time, improved vehicle safety and flow. Oftentimes, discussion of such improvements are met with initial skepticism. However, as people become more familiar, residents recognize the wisdom of the design and the increased safety for cyclists and pedestrians. Within a short time, it is difficult to imagine a street without these improvements. My wife and I strongly support this proposal, and we hope that the city does not waste any time to implement these improvements. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Jay Walker, followed by Kevin Dager.
Hi, my name is Jay Ting Walker. I live in Shadyside, and I'm speaking in favor of neighborways because Reynolds Street is not as safe as people think it is, especially for bikers. I've enjoyed the Highland Park Neighborhood, and I think supporting bicycling is important for equity reasons in the city of Pittsburgh. So I bike on Reynolds regularly when visiting friends in Point Breeze and when traveling to Frick Park for walks and to sort of frisbee around. And I've been buzzed on Reynolds Street multiple times by cars. And it makes me feel really unsafe. So I'm looking forward to the safety improvements that come with the neighborhood. I also bike on Penn Avenue regularly because I feel that it's really hard to get from Reynolds Street to Braddock, so I'm looking forward to those improvements. Biking on Penn Avenue is not a pleasant experience, as I'm sure you'd imagine. And I know this neighborhood was put on Reynolds, I would take Reynolds instead every time. I've also experienced a neighborhood on Euclid multiple times. I've really enjoyed the experience, although I did have an issue with a car trying to pass me while I was biking on Euclid. And they were trying to speed past me, and I can only imagine how bad it would be if the traffic calming wasn't already in place. So, you know, this, the neighborhood improvement helps a lot, but it still doesn't stop drivers from doing dangerous things with their cars. But I do appreciate the improvements. Lastly, I'd like to say that cycling is really important for equity reasons. I think for some reason, a lot of people have an idea that cyclists are, you know, wealthy people who enjoy doing something, just enjoy riding their bike just because it's fun. But I know a lot of cyclists, including myself, we ride because we can't afford to drive. I can't afford a car. And I try to ride more than take the bus because it's cheaper. So I think it's really important to support cycling as an option for travel, for equity reasons especially. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that I always stop at stop signs, especially at Hastings, going down Reynolds, the hill. You know, it's crazy to fly through a downhill, like, I'm not trying to die, you know? This really puts me at risk, so I always stop there. Also, I would like to mention that I'm not an engineer, so I always defer to experts when it comes to impact of various traffic control mechanisms. And I know the engineers are weighing in on this project, and I trust them. In summary, I felt unsafe on Reynolds. I've really enjoyed the neighborhood experience in Highland Park. And I think supporting bike infrastructure is a really strong way to support equity in the city of Pittsburgh. I'm in favor of the Reynolds Street Neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kevin Dager, followed by Kea Joseph.
All right, my name is Kevin Dager. I've recently moved to the corner of Linden and Reynolds. And like some of the earlier commenters, I guess, I was just really wanting to tune in out of concern for the unknown. You know, I never really understood what the clear picture was. It seems it changed throughout. So after getting the initial presentation, I agree, I feel a little bit less concerned. Although, living at the corner and having, you know, young kids, I'm still curious in particular of the proposal for the Linden and Reynolds intersection, with the pitch of Reynolds both coming up from Hastings and, you know, over the crown as you head towards Dallas, of what a roundabout would do there. So, you know, I know this isn't really a question and answer session, you know, session, but that's my main concern at this point. Beyond that, I have seen what has been, I guess, put in over in Highland Park. And I'm curious if this is what is being aimed for? Meaning, just, you know, right now, there just looks like some flower pots in the middle of a circle. And I was just concerned if that was maybe temporary or what it would look like long-term. Again, I realize this isn't a question and answer session, but hopefully that and other information will be shared throughout this process. And again, I'm not, you know, weighing in one way or the other on this, just more concerned and interested in more information, you know, as the process unfolds. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next is Kea Joseph, followed by Joseph McGinley. Is Kea Joseph here? All right, next is Joseph McGinley.
Hello, how's everyone doing this evening?
Good, thank you.
So I'm just going to get this quick, and it sounds like this deal's kind of a done deal, which is kind of, you know, annoys me because I've done with these things many times before, and it always seems to be a done deal. I still believe, you know, Reynolds, top Reynolds and Linden is a dangerous area. I've lived in the neighborhood, I grew up on Glen Arden. I live in the neighborhood, I got multiple properties in the area, I know it very well. I'm 43 years old, I've lived in this area all my life. My family's been here for generations. I don't think the Reynolds idea is a safe area, like, it was brought many times. Bikes are not stopping. Emergency vehicles are going to have a hard time going around a roundabout up there. But what I am more concerned about, I'm going to get in because I know I'm on short time, I don't appreciate when I've heard on the first call to grant backrac threats. Is that how things are done in the city, people being threatened? That, I hope, is being looked into because that's disturbing to me. Second of all, why are we doing this? And why does this need to be pushed through so fast when the city is in a financial crisis with COVID, defunding police, and everyone's talking about recs? We don't even have the police department that can handle this. This doesn't make sense. And is the city going to be liable for when the situations do occur at these roundabouts or whatever you want to call them, I've heard so many different names? So I'll leave it at that, and I hope you guys will look into this. And I'd like the one proposal on the cameras, maybe investigate with the weather.
Thank you. We have Jonathan Arnold, followed by Courtney Erlichman.
Hello, my name's Jonathan Arnold. I wanted to come here today to support the neighborhood and the work that's going on. I grew up at one end of Reynolds, or near one end of Reynolds, down near Penn and Braddock. Now I live at the other end, near Penn and Fifth. And I spent time on Reynolds and in the neighborhood much of my life. I used to walk down Reynolds every day to get to Sterrett, to get to Middlestool. And starting in ninth grade, I used to walk around my bike up to Alderice. And I would say that as a kid, I definitely felt fairly safe in the neighborhood, but there was always that car that was racing down Reynolds that was trying to avoid the traffic on Penn. And as a kid, I learned early on not to ride on the street that we always rode on the sidewalk on Reynolds because there was always that one car that was screaming down the street, trying to get in front of the traffic. And now, having left Pittsburgh for a while and then moving back, I live down at the other end, near Reynolds and Beechwood down at that end. And I walk and ride my bike down Reynolds periodically with my wife and my three young kids to go visit my parents, who still live in the house I grew up in. And I hope that, I hope that when they grow up, or as they're growing up, that they're able to use Reynolds and ride on the street in a way that I wasn't when I was a kid. So I thank you for all the work that's going on here, and I look forward to seeing what it all looks like in the end.
Thank you. Next is Courtney Erlichman, followed by Joy Sobel. I believe that Courtney had to step away. Is Courtney here? Next, we have Joy Sobel, followed by Robert Uber.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Very good. Joy Sobel, 7008 Willard Street. Back when I was in grad school in Seattle is when the circles were going in in Seattle. And we had a lot of the same reaction of people saying either that they were not going to work or that they were going to be impossible to navigate. And yet, they have become just a part of the landscape there. And yes, we also have snow in Seattle, just as we have snow in Pittsburgh. And they are just fine in the snow, which the same is not true, in fact, of many sorts of speed humps. That's part of the reason for going for the circles. And if you now go on Street View and look how people are using them in real life when they don't know they're being observed by the Google Cars, you will see that people are using them the right way. They go around the circle, they do not go over the circle, they do not go backwards around the circle. The circles work. Also, as far as history, the process was not good, but it's not that it didn't start early enough. I have a message from Richard Merritzer, the late lamented Rich Merritzer, back in November 2005, and Dave Bachmann, the Penn Bicycle Pedestrian Program Manager. I have another one in 2005 from Neha Gabawala at cityofpittsburgh PA.us. Nice meeting you last Monday, here's a soft copy of the Civic Roadways brochure. These plans have been ongoing since at least 2005. The problem is that neighborhoods change and people change in them. And the notification did not keep pace with the people moving in and out of the neighborhood. So it's not surprising that people are feeling blindsided. But they should realize that this has been a very long-term plan with input all along. And, you know, thank you for having done so much background on it, but keeping people notified over time is an absolutely crucial part of the process. Finally, much as I love the idea of the circles, I too have some reservations about the wisdom of putting one at the top of the peak of a hill that comes in as a hill in two directions. Also, they are at their best when they are chained up 1, 2, 3, 4 in quick succession. If you could put them all in succession on the flat first and make sure that they work there, that might be the better answer. Finally, in Seattle, I believe some of them started with stop signs and then very carefully moved to yield signs for two of the four directions where there was a major street, thus both smoothing the traffic flow, but keeping the safety aspect. And finally, I actually, both in Seattle and in Ames, Iowa, where I spend part of the year, there's, instead of keeping things at 36 inches, which actually can hide a stroller or a wheelchair, it can be better to do a bi-level situation where you have just flowers at the bottom, and then you have a narrow tree.
Thank you. Next is Robert Uber, followed by Marilyn Kennedy.
Okay, can you hear me correctly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the people who submitted the petition so that you solicit more citizen input. And thank you for taking your time to listen. I'm, my name is Robert Uber. I'm a 21-year homeowner here in Point Breeze, a block off of the east end of Reynolds. And my concern is, you know, this project was sold as traffic calming, yet I look at it, and from an engineering point of view, I unfortunately see it as foreseeably more dangerous. So I think the neighborhood concept can work safely at Euclid, where there's more wide-open boulevards. But unfortunately, the intersections at South Lang, Mertland, Linden, all have very limited sight distances. On the corner of Lang, we have a house right up against the curb. You barely have two feet of dirt adjacent to the sidewalk. So I, and also considering Lang and Reynolds is the corner of Sterrett School. Large buses have to turn at these intersections, 40-foot buses. And didn't the state recently allow 44 or longer buses as well? The turns are just too tight. Buses would have to drive over the traffic circle. And you touted the plan as now saying it's all concrete, so they are meant to drive over. And the raised traffic circle will be spilling the kids inside the bus. We'll have injuries of children going, just as right now, some of the kids going to Taylor Alderice, having to go over those speed humps on Beechwood Boulevard, get bounced around. So when they were first put in, kids got injured, high schoolers. Now, they know about it, and they play games with it and bounce with the bus on purpose. The idea of turning left in front of the concrete mini-circle The idea of turning left in front of the concrete mini-circle is doubly dangerous as at South Lang. The adjacent South Homewood intersection is a normal left around the circle. So all the cars are expecting people to go around the circle. And now you're saying long vehicles, buses, trucks are gonna be cutting left in front. That just seems to be foreseeably dangerous. We're gonna get lawsuits against the city for that design deficiency. Now, the plan was originally for yield signs, but now we're keeping the stop signs. How can we rely on the stop signs not being removed in the future, like the lady from Seattle just touted? Removal of stop signs will cause, I'm concerned, will cause traffic to shift from Penn Avenue up onto Reynolds, because now it's easier to go speeding through to get to the light and onto Dallas and Wilkins. Nothing, nothing was said. What is the diameter of the turning circles? Is it eight feet? Is it 16? What, 32? No mention of that. So this plan seems to be in flux. It's hard to comment on a plan, and we should certainly never approve a plan that is so in flux. Both South Lang and Mertland have numerous school bus stops with many children. The many traffic circles will force all the Reynolds traffic adjacent to the, to move adjacent to the curb.
Thank you. Next is Marilyn Kennedy, followed by Ginny Kennedy. Is Marilyn Kennedy here? Seeing no. Our last speaker is Ginny Kennedy. Do we have Ginny Kennedy here?
David just informed me the last two were not present. The last two speakers were not present.
All right, then, having exhausted the business of this public hearing, we've exhausted the speakers list. I don't think we've exhausted the business because I would like to turn it over to my council colleague who's joined me today, Deb Gross, in case she has any comments. I know that she's, she's been here listening and has also been, is also representing the district that has the pilot mini-traffic circle on Euclid. So Councilwoman Gross, do you have any comment or words that you'd like to say today?
Thank you. We did have, you know, a lot of citizen feedback as well, as I think Director Ricks, you know, elucidated very clearly at the beginning of the meeting. She and her team came out on site. We, she has cameras on some of the circles, I know, measuring traffic flow. We've had dialogue back and forth with the ADA community and emergency services. So I appreciate Domi's responsiveness and willing to adapt the designs so that people feel, you know, we're accommodating safety all around. And I'm supportive of the project here in Highland Park. I definitely have some neighbors who have been very vocal at council with their concerns that are similar to some of the concerns that I heard here tonight about the Point Breeze project. But I'm mostly here on the street from people who maybe aren't the kinds who come to hearings or testify at council how excited they are about the traffic circles. Even if we're having a conversation that isn't about mobility or traffic, they bring it up. So I think it's a welcome new option that we have, specifically the traffic circles. But in general, I really appreciate the kind of overall plan with neighborways that Domi has been working on with so many members of the public across the whole city, across, as you, you know, the director mentioned, the 1,200 miles of street, to make those connections between current pieces of infrastructure so that people can navigate from neighborhood to neighborhood, to the destinations they get, need to get to safely and with hopefully lower car speeds so that we, we can see lower injuries and lower fatalities where we do, when we do have conflicts. So I really appreciate the hearing from, from the public always. And it's really helpful, I think, in making all of our work turn out better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for being here this evening. As I mentioned at the very beginning, I know that Councilwoman Reverend Burgess is, had a, had a previously scheduled meeting that is also being cable cast to our Cable Bureau on Black Pittsburgh Matters. And so is not able to join us, but will be watching this. It's currently live streamed, but we'll, we'll be watching the YouTube video of it later on and hearing all the comments. I'll just say for my part, I want to thank everyone who took their time to raise their voices, to make their voice heard this evening. Whether you had concerns about the neighborhood, whether you had some constructive criticism about the process, whether you are fully in support of it, really appreciate it. And I was grateful, actually, in the end, for this, for this opportunity for us all to talk about this in another forum. I'll say that, you know, just one note about the process before I say something quickly about the actual project. I think that everyone who was involved would, would nod their heads at this statement that, you know, the communication, certainly, there was, there was some lack, lacking in the communication in terms of, in the process at the very beginning. But what I will say is that, and, you know, certainly it's something that I've discussed with the director and with other leadership in Domi, and it's been a learning experience for sure. But what I will say is that with every project, it's never going to be, it's always gonna feel like it's in flux a little bit because that is how we respond to public feedback. So the first plan that was put out there was put out there as the version one of the plan with opportunity for public feedback, with opportunity for comments. Many, many comments were received from Domi, from Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and the project leads with Moving Forward Pittsburgh. And, and I received comments as well that I passed along to the project leads. Then there's a version two, which many people had heard, and then there's, you know, the next version. And so I don't think there's ever going to be a plan that solicits public feedback that is gonna be final in its very first iteration. So I'll just say that. I also want to just mention, equity was brought up a couple of different times this evening, but just, and I didn't know it wasn't brought up as a, as a major concern, but I'll just say that it's easy to look at a project like this that runs through a well-resourced neighborhood and think, why is this neighborhood getting this? And what we need to keep in mind is that this is part of a network. We do have a bike plus plan that runs throughout the city. And that every different part of that bike plus plan, if you go to it, if you look up bike plus plan, you will, and you go to pages 19 and 20, you will, you'll be able to see the whole network map of that. And you'll see how the Reynolds Neighborhood connects, allows someone on bicycle to connect to Laramore, East Liberty, and Homewood and other parts of the city. And then we're gonna see a network spans the entire city. That's the point of the network plan. So I know it's easy to think of it in piecemeal because that's sometimes how it's implemented, but it's, it's part of a network. It's part of a whole plan to make us make sure that everyone who is traveling the roads, whether they're walking, biking, using a wheelchair, driving, taking public transportation, whether they're nine years old or 90 years old, has the opportunity to do so safely. And, and then, you know, lastly, with the pandemic, you know, people are still using public transportation, but many, many people are choosing not to use public transportation. And one other option besides driving a car, especially for shorter trips, is bicycle or walking or scooter. We want it to be as safe as possible. So, so I'm in support of anything that, that calms traffic and allows for multiple modes of transportation in the street. That said, my staff have been taking copious notes through this, through this public hearing, and we will make sure that, I'm sure that Director Ricks' staff have as well, and we'll be able to compare notes and make sure that any questions that were raised this evening will be answered and then sent back out to the community using a variety of methods. So we'll make sure that people get their questions answered, certainly. So without any further business before council this evening, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.